Our meeting of the Larkspur City Council to order. Thank you for coming this evening. The first item on the agenda is the roll call. May I please have the roll?
Councilmember Haroff.
Here.
Councilmember Way.
Here.
Councilmember Chu.
Here.
Vice Mayor Morrison.
Here.
And Mayor Helmer.
Here. If you're able, would you please rise and join us in our pledge of allegiance. Thank you very much. The first item on the seat on this evening's agenda is public comment. Are there any members of the public that are here this evening that would like to speak to an item not on the agenda? Yes, sir. If you'd please come to the microphone and tell us who you are.
James Holm, Slarkspur. In today's IJ, I read an interesting article which perhaps some of you also saw with regard to addressing the issue of markings, construction markings, that stay on the streets sometimes long after the construction has completed. And if you would, apparently this has become a concern from Hill Valley, and it is taking action to request or require that more soluble or removable markings be used. If you would like a copy of this, I can make a copy of it and give it to the clerk. But in any event, I think it's something to think about because we too have a lot of long-lasting markings on the sidewalks. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there other members of the public that would like to make comments that are related to items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on. Next item on the agenda, we're proud to have a presentation this evening from the Central Marin Police Authority, a yearly update to our city council, provided by our esteemed chief, Mike Norton.
I'm basically going to be introducing Captain Hameel Kalili and Lieutenant Theo Manera. But before they come up, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for having us once again. As you can see, our yearly presentation really brings the crowds out, so thank you for that. In all seriousness, it is quite a bit of work for them to put this together every year. And I will say, I was a little surprised with how the numbers were very similar to last year when you take into account we've had a ton of turnover in the last year and a half, two years. We've almost had 20% to 25% of our department turn over and have new officers. They're great new officers. They're a little inexperienced, but they have a tremendous motor and they work really hard, and I think that's reflected in some of the numbers that you'll see. And while we're training someone, we basically are taking someone off the street. So we were very shorthanded the last 12 months, 12 to 18 months, but at the same time, I think the numbers were really good. So I was very impressed with that. And if you have any questions throughout, I think it's easier just to ask them as we go, and they'll be more than glad to answer them. And if you have any questions at the end. Other than that, I'd like to turn it over now.
Welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you again for having us here. And what we're going to talk about here very shortly is stats. So I'm going to wow you with a whole bunch of stats. This in no way, shape, or form encompasses everything that we've done. It just highlights some of the important aspects that I'm sure are important to you as well as the community. This very first slide here represents the total calls for service that CMP responded to, 39,425 calls for service. You know, looking at that number, it doesn't seem like much, but to us, each one of those calls for service is an opportunity for us to succeed or fail as an organization. That's 39,425 opportunities for us to not land on national news, as some of our neighboring agencies have unfortunately gone through recently. Is this on a laser pointer? This area right here shows the days of the week, and for some odd reason, Tuesdays happen to be the busiest days of the week for us. And as you can see here, just as in previous years, right around the 7:00 hour, we start increasing, and about 10:00 p.m., 11:00 p.m., we start decreasing call volume. But I want to bring your attention over here to this pie chart. Of these 39,000-plus calls, 15,329 of them, about 39% is Larkspur's share. That is a small increase. Larkspur had 35% last year, and that's through, we'll go through it and I'll explain why. Most of this is attributed to the new Intograph system that we've been going through since contracting with the Marin County Sheriff's Office. They gather data in a much different manner, which is actually, it's more beneficial for This slide here shows of those calls for service, what the top 10 locations are. And as you can see, most of these locations are shopping centers, schools, anywhere where you have a large population of people gathering, mostly retail shops, there's going to be crime, right? So at the very top, the Town Center, mostly the Corte Madera, but there's Bonner Shopping Center, Marin Country Mart, that's for Larkspur would be the highest concentration of people, East Sir Francis Drake, Larkspur Landing, Redwood High School, and I'll touch on Redwood real quick. Redwood, this year, has been more headline news, as I'm sure you've seen in the tweets and the next doors. If you've been following the news at all, you'll see it, and there was one today of the threats of violence. And so it's, I don't want to say that Redwood kind of started that trend, but we saw it early on in the school year, and now there's many, many other high schools throughout the Bay Area that have followed suit. It is an anomaly. We haven't seen this many threats, lockdowns at schools as we have in years past. But knock on wood, ours have kind of tapered off. And in following the news, like I said, there was another high school in the East Bay today that went into lockdown due to a graffiti threat. But with the high school, there's the Health and Wellness Center that tends to generate a lot of calls for service, and it's a great resource for the students. But, you know, the council starts seeing reports of mental health issues, people reaching out, needing help, and that's where we get involved. So that's why Redwood stands out in this top 10 locations. And then...
Excuse me.
Sir.
One of our council members has a question for us.
Oh, I'm sorry.
A question about that is, do we still currently have a resource officer at Redwood?
Yes.
Full-time? I know years ago, we did, but...
Yes.
We do.
We have Officer Scott McKenna, who is our full-time school resource officer. The first few months of the school year, he had suffered a foot injury, so he was out on light duty for an extended period of time, but he's back now full-time, and he dedicates his time mostly to the high schools and then to the elementary schools as needed.
And when you say Redwood, do you break that down? Does that also include the San Andreas, because that's on the same campus, and sort of Tamaskal, which is, you know, sort of on the same campus also? Are you including those two schools in that, too?
Not Tamiskal, but San Andreas, yes.
Is included in this Redwood number?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And most of these locations are, the way it's generated in the Intograph system is by address. And so Redwood and San Andreas share the same address, and so therefore, everything kind of is encompassed at that one location. At the very bottom here is the call types, and what we see, extra patrol requests. That's requests from the citizens saying, hey, there was a suspicious person, suspicious vehicle, or my neighborhood recently had a rash of auto burglaries. And so they'll request, and we'll go out there and we'll provide that. With the extra patrol requests, this last year, there was a perception that the auto burglaries were rampant. And so what we did was, we increased our extra patrols to combat that. Not so much to catch them, but to prevent the auto burglaries. With council's approval, I'll just pass by Corte Madera and San Anselmo's and focus more on Larkspur's heat maps. These heat maps basically take all the calls for service, and they put it into this geomapping system, and it spits out this heat map. And it really focuses in these orange areas where the highest call volumes are occurring. And for Larkspur, it happens to be right around the Redwood High School. It's no surprise. Redwood High School does generate a lot of parking complaints, and so we do see that, and that's why it's kind of in that area. And again, the top five calls for service include extra patrols, traffic stops, assist fire. Assist fire could be anything from assisting them with medical aids to lift assists, gaining entry into a house to render aid, and then audible alarms. Audible alarms tend to take up a lot of calls for service throughout all the communities. This slide here is the reports. And the reports for us, we took 2,783 reports last year. That's not a very large increase from 2016. As a matter of fact, it's about 50 more than we took in 2016. Same data, again, Tuesdays and Wednesdays, we tend to take more reports than other days of the week. And Larkspur, we took 1,059 reports. Part of that is majority of people will come to the station, which happens to be in Larkspur, to file reports. So I don't want you to think that there's a huge discrepancy between the different communities. It just happens to be that's where we're at, so... Just want to spend a moment to talk about this slide here. This is the total crimes, the crime types that we took reports for. On the left-hand side is what we call part-one crimes. Those are crimes that we report to the FBI. And then on the right-hand side is what we call part-two crimes. Those are crimes that are not reported to anybody. Just of note, we did have homicide in Larkspur last year. Very quick summary, it was a murder-suicide. It was a very tragic case, which occurred in the Greenbry Hills. And then the trends with the rapes, robberies, aggravated assaults, there aren't huge increases or decreases, they pretty much remain the same as the prior year. The one thing that we did do differently this year was we really broke down the thefts. Thefts tend to be an area of concern for our communities, right? What are we doing to combat the theft? And so for us, it was really important to know what types of thefts are we combating. And unlocked vehicles account for 55, bike thefts are 30. Again, combating perception. There's a perception that bike thefts are just rampant throughout our communities, when in actuality, is it a problem? Yes. But it's not as rampant as many will make it out to be. Auto burglaries. Auto burglaries for the town, for the city of Larkspur were at 80. Corte Madera, a lot more, and the only reason for that is, again, shopping centers. You have a lot of vehicles, people tend to store their purchases in plain sight. It's a crime of opportunity for these people. Larkspur's a little bit more off the beaten path, but with Larkspur, the highest concentration of the auto burglaries were around the Marin Country Mart area. It's important to know that there wasn't a huge spike in auto burglaries in any of the communities, a very small increase. What many people don't know is, why was there such a huge increase from three, four, or five years ago? In 2015, Proposition 47 passed, and that was the reduction of penalties for certain crimes. One of those crimes was auto burglaries. You know, when the chief and I and Lieutenant Manera first started, if you caught an auto burglar, it was a felony. They would go to jail, and sometimes they would go to prison. It is now a misdemeanor. And so the suspects that are committing these crimes know that and understand that, and it kind of emboldens them to commit more of these acts. Top 10 locations for the reports that we've taken, again, no surprise, they surround the And again, for Larkspur, it's, I don't think the slide shows it very well, but it happens to be, you know, generally in that same vicinity as the calls for service. And incident reports were the top, followed by auto burglary and petty theft and mental commitment. So again, no real change from last year. And with that, I'm going to hand it off to Lieutenant Manera, unless council has any questions.
Are there any questions of Officer Kalili?
I have a few questions.
Sure.
So Redwood.
Parking complaints? What do you do about it? Is it tickets?
What we've been seeing is, Redwood has limited parking spaces and a lot more students than available parking. They also have dedicated staff spots, and it's kind of a free-for-all for people to park in those locations. And so Redwood tries to bring some control to the chaos, and what they do is they call us, and we're the enforcement tool for them. And so, yes, to answer your question, we do go out there and we do issue parking citations, but we try to control it. They do call us on a daily basis, and it's a constant dialogue with Redwood staff to go, hey, the solution to your parking situation is in strict enforcement. You have a bigger problem on your hands, and so we'll come and help mitigate, but enforcement's not going to be the only solution.
Okay. And then in Hillview, you recently gave out parking tickets for cars that were parked the incorrect direction. What caused that to occur?
That was, it was actually a citizen complaint. It was one of the residents that called us to complain about that, and so we did go out there and we did issue them citations, because it is a violation of the California Vehicle Code.
Okay. And then mental commitment, do you take them to the hospital?
The mental commitment, so there's, it's a three-prong test for us. It's a danger to themselves, a danger to others, or greatly disabled. And so what we do is, it's not an arrest, it's a detention for their mental health evaluation. So what we do is, we transport them to the Marin General Hospital, the mental health unit, and we place them on a 72-hour hold for evaluation. Once they enter that facility, there's medical professionals that will work with them, see if they need medication, and then basically determine if there's a need for more evaluation and treatment, or if they no longer meet that criteria, they'll get released.
And they're forced to go? Is that correct?
Not all the time.
Okay.
Not all the time. If they meet one of those three prongs, yes. We do place them on a hold. But sometimes, it's a person that might just need some help, might just need to talk to a medical professional, they're not really a danger to themselves, and we're that tool to take them. So we call that a voluntary commitment.
Great. Thank you. Nice report.
Councilmember Way.
Do you collect information of the residency of the people who are stopped or apprehended, whether they're Marin County residents or non-Marin County residents? Is that data collected?
So yes and no. If citations issued, if a report's taken, then yes. It's easily trackable as to their residency. For most consensual contacts or detentions that don't end in any type of enforcement, then no.
You don't have that?
Not yet. There is legislation that's been passed that for an agency our size goes into effect, I believe, is it 2023?
A couple of years. The large agencies start next year, and it's not only residency, but it's race and gender and age. There's a whole big list of that. We'll need to be got them.
And then at that point, we will be required to document every single contact.
You will, yeah. And then you mentioned audible alarms take up a lot of your time. I don't recall if we have, I know you have a registration for home alarm systems, people can register them, but what is the process if somebody has multiple alarms? Do we find them? I don't even know what our municipal codes has about that.
So there is an ordinance, and in Larkspur, there is one, where people are required to register their alarms, right?
They are required.
Mm-hmm. And basically, it's three responses are free, and then every subsequent alarm response, there is a fine attached to it.
Are you finding that you have to find a lot of people?
Not a lot. Not a lot. We've, you know, in years past, just off the top of my head, I can count a handful of locations that had habitual alarms go off almost on a daily basis, but we don't just blindly respond to those all the time. After a few, we start seeing a trend, we'll reach out to the business owner or the homeowner and work with them in resolving. Sometimes it's just, it's an equipment issue or...
A dog got in the way or something.
A dog, right, right.
And then you mentioned the extra patrol requests. That comes from a citizen, or it could come from a business or something like that. Is there a follow-up, then, or is that extra patrol request maybe for a certain number of shifts, or is that just sort of at the discretion of what the issue happens to be?
It is. It is. It's on a case-by-case basis. An extra patrol request generated depends, depending on what type. Let's just say it's an auto burglary. We don't just go out there every day for, you know, six months. It's on a case-by-case. And, you know, we have limited resources, and we try to provide the best of a service that we can. And so, believe it or not, there's not just extra patrol requests for crime, but what we see the most of is extra patrol requests for traffic issues. And every community has traffic safety issues, and there's always so many of us and so many hours in the day where we can go out and provide those extra patrols. So truthfully, we try to do the best with what we have.
Thanks.
With regards to the extra patrol for traffic, the main thing we do is we go out and we'll at least do it once, and we evaluate it. And we also have a really cool thing called a stealth box that our traffic team will mount, and it'll gather all the data for speeds for three days to a week. And sometimes we do that before we even go in force. And then we'll get the data, we look at it and go, okay, one car's speeding on this road a day. We won't even waste our time going out there. We'll reach out to the resident and go, hey, I know you requested this, but here's what we found. We're not going to be going out. If you think it gets worse, let us know. And that's really helped our time. And then just to touch on the parking, Hillview parking issue, we basically, in all our communities, we treat parking very similar to how we would treat a leaf blower, a leaf blower response, or someone smoking outside. We don't go looking for it. The only place we really go looking for parking in Larkspur would be your downtown here, the hour and the lots, and then occasionally for disabled spots, we're always kind of keeping an eye out on those, making sure parking there. But we don't go into neighborhoods and look for people parking the wrong way, or out in Madrone Canyon and look for people outside the boxes. We do that based on people calling in and notifying us, just like we do with leaf blowers and smoking or noise or things like that. And we found that's a good balance between enough enforcement and not too much.
Other questions of Officer Kalili? I had one regarding the data. Of the average 108 calls for service per day, you indicated there was also an average of seven of those being reports per day. Can you characterize type of reports that are most frequent?
You know, Mr. Mayor, off the top of my head, I don't know what's the highest report type, but what I can tell you is typically, we take reports for criminal conduct, anything that rises to the level of, we know a crime's occurred, and we're going to either refer to the DA's office for prosecution, or that incident resulted in an arrest that has to be documented. We do, we do take reports for all sorts of things, accidents.
You...
Okay.
Actually, I meant to ask about the threshold warranting a report. You answered my question better than I could ask the question. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Officer Kalili? Thank you.
Absolutely. All right. I'm going to carry on here much in the same fashion, but thank you very much for having us. I'm going to go over traffic stops and traffic collisions. Our numbers are fairly consistent to what we had last year, last, this, excuse me, to what we had in 2016. In 2017, we made 3,482 traffic stops throughout our three jurisdictions. The portion for Larkspur is 1,291 traffic stops. So the majority of those occurred, they tend to occur centered towards our shopping centers. We'll go to the next slide, and you'll see that the shopping centers are large gathering places. The top five locations for us were East Sir Francis Drake, where we have the parking lot of the ferry terminal, the Larkspur Ferry Terminal, Redwood High School, and Bonner Center, followed up by the Country Mart. The traffic stop locations sometimes can be a little bit tricky, because a lot of those statistical, that statistical information is based off the location of the traffic stop, not necessarily the location of the violation. There's a lot of things our officers will take into account before actually stopping the vehicle, is just making sure they have a safe place to do so. There's not a lot of space in some of the streets to make traffic stops, so we will wait until we have an open area to make a traffic stop. So like I said, some of that data is skewed just a bit. The next area is moving and traffic citations combined, and it talks about the days of the week as well as the numbers. For the city of Larkspur, combined, we issued 1,967 moving and parking citations combined. Once again, the day of the week was Tuesday, the busiest day of the week, and you can see the shaded area which represents moving versus parking. And of the 1,967 moving and parking citations, the breakdown for the top five locations was Redwood High School was number one, followed by East Sir Francis Drake, Larkspur Landing Circle, 500 Magnolia, which is the muni lot area, Highway 101 at Sir Francis Drake, followed up by the 200 block of Doherty Drive. And these are all areas that are extremely congested during the day, as well as during the rush hours. And then traffic collisions, it's actually the area that went down for our jurisdiction this past year. We actually have fewer traffic collisions in 2017 than we did in 2016. We took a total of 725 traffic reports in 2017. Of that, 275 of those reports were taken in the city of Larkspur.
Does that include any accidents that occur on Highway 101, or does that go under CHP?
That would go under CHP's jurisdiction, as long as the actual crash happened on 101. If perhaps they crashed on the off-ramp when it was still our jurisdiction, carried on to 101, it would be ours. But wherever the first impact takes place, that would be...
So if you assist to respond, let's say if Central Marin Fire goes to a crash scene, do you go along to assist with that?
We oftentimes will go along to assist medical, to assist CHP. A lot of times, we can get there faster, just we're in a better location and just render aid in a more timely of a manner. We do assist with that. So our locations for, the top locations for traffic collisions in our jurisdictions, the first two are really no surprise to us, because it's the highest concentrated area. Unfortunately, they're in Corte Madera, or fortunately, they're in Corte Madera. The next one is Marin Country Mart, followed by Bonner Shopping Center, East Sir Francis Drake, and then Larkspur Landing Ferry Terminal. And the last one is the 250 Door to Drive, which is actually our police station. And the reason that is the case is because a lot of the reports, they'll walk into the station and they'll report the crashes at that location. And so that's where the crashes get reported at. It's actually not an accurate reflection of crashes happening in our back parking lot, so... And then our heat map for the city of Larkspur for the top five locations are the Country Mart, Bonner Shopping Center, East Sir Francis Drake, the Ferry Terminal, and then the 200 block of Doherty Drive. I would be happy to answer any other questions you have.
Councilmember Chu has a question.
Yeah, since you brought up the Doherty, 250 Doherty, even though it's being reported there, how is that intersection, is that getting any accidents? Because one of the things that we talked about back in '06 was that there wasn't going to be a stoplight there, but there was always something that we should monitor, because it was recommended that there would be.
I think we've been okay with it. We've had a couple of close calls. When it's congested, it actually works a little bit better, because everyone's traveling at a lower speed. We have had a few accidents there, but nothing of any significance.
Okay. Thank you. I know there's... I know there's a lot of contention before and after school as well, so...
It gets a little contentious, I'll give you that, but when they're going slower, it does work a little bit better. It's when there, when there's less traffic, we seem to see more problems, because the speeds on Doerty at times can go above the speed limit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, go ahead.
That is my last slide.
Are there other questions of Officer Manera's? How's your golf game?
Ah, terrible. It's on vacation.
Thank you so much, Theo.
Okay.
And thank you for all of your work.
Thank you.
I'm walking home tonight. The next item on this evening's agenda is consideration and approval of the consent calendar. Are there items that council members would like to remove for further discussion? If not, will entertain a motion to adopt the consent calendar?
Move to adopt a consent calendar.
And I'll second it.
There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is the city manager's oral report. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you all. Note, our city manager, Dan Schwartz, is out this week, and I am acting city manager for the week in his place. And a few items to note for the council tonight. One, I'll just quickly preempt a little bit on the general plan update. We did hold a workshop last night on the health and safety element, and it was not as large of a turnout as we would like. However, again, this is really an update to the existing draft general plan that was created by the Citizens Advisory Committee in 2011. We're really working on sort of updating it from that time. The focus last night was on fire hazard and flooding, largely getting our general plan, kind of backfilling it so it is up to date with the current practices, organizational structures, cooperative efforts, and practices in terms of preparedness, kind of backing up what is occurring today and into the future. And in terms of flooding, really, the largest change since the CAC draft is, we have a lot more information now about sea level rise. So, the discussion we'll be having with the steering committee and what we wanted to elicit to the public was that it's a good time to begin recognizing the areas of the city that will be affected by sea level rise, and how we can begin planning for future flood events and looking at what measures... We're not going to solve it in this effort, but we're going to begin laying the groundwork for future efforts under the health and safety element. So, our next meeting of the steering committee will be on the 17th. We will be talking more on this specific topic of the health and safety ordinance, excuse me, the health and safety element. And then we will be holding a public workshop again on May 1st to discuss circulation and transportation. We do have, we have now done more updated traffic counts, so we have more information about levels of service. And we'll be discussing the matter of VMT, that's Vehicle Miles Traveled, the new standard being implemented by the state, particularly for environmental review. So we'll be putting out more information on that topic and try to encourage people to come to the public workshop. Other information, I wanted to relate, the Department of Public Works is very busy. There's a lot going on. As your people in the audience are probably aware, the city council back in March awarded the construction contract for the Bay, Bonner Bay Bridge, excuse me, the Bonner Bridge Replacement Project was awarded to Golden State Construction, and DPW and the project team are working on the construction details and the timeline. And mobilization and preparation for the work is anticipated to begin in May, with major construction beginning in July. And news about the project, the details and the timeline can be found on our website. There's a link to www.bonnerbridge.com, that is on the, there's a link to that on our website. And that webpage is currently being updated. It's been updated, and it will be continually refreshed as information is available about the bridge project. Other things going on, the draft five-year plan for the Measure B road repair is going to be, undergo an initial discussion. There's going to be an open house meeting on that from 6:30 PM to 8:00 PM on Tuesday, April 10th next week. And that will be at the CMPA Community Room, and residents are welcome. This is a drop-in type of workshop, and the staff is hoping to finalize the paving program by May of this year with the first Measure B paving scheduled for summer of 2019. And that's all to report. Any questions?
Questions of the acting city manager on his oral report. Seeing that, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda this evening are council members' oral reports and comments, first being a report from the April 3, 2018, meeting of the General Plan Update Steering Committee, council members Wei and Hara.
Yeah, I'll be happy to address it. I mean, we did have the meeting. Neil described what the meeting was. I don't really feel the need to replicate that. Councilmember Wei and I, I were both in attendance, and it was a not well-attended meeting, but there were some members of the public who were there and had some good questions and some good comments, and we appreciated hearing them and are looking forward to our next study session.
And I'll concur with that. I just want to bring people's, to people's attention that I thought the mapping, the maps that you provided of sea level rise in our jurisdiction and wildland fire were really excellent, so I appreciate that. And they are available online under our, under the website, where you can see sea level rise map for us, and also, did you put the link to the web, Bayweb? I think that was linked on there too, Baywave.
I think, I think it's linked from within some of the attachments, but we, what we may do is we'll try to make sure that's a pretty prominent link on our page.
I think there were a lot of questions from several members of the audience about how they could look at their own properties that way, but I encourage everybody who's interested in seeing what these maps look like to look at that site. And I also, it was, it was great to see that all four members of the steering committee were there, including the planning commissioner, so I think we're really getting some good information. So thank you about that, Neil. I don't have anything else.
All right. Thank you very much. Other council member reports?
I do. I want to say that the 2018 Marin teen girl conference was huge. We had over, we had 250 girls from all over Marin County come. The keynote speaker, Pam Homamoto, who's the former ambassador of the United Nations, she did a great job as the keynote speaker, and the girls had over 26 workshops to choose from, and they had three workshops throughout the day. So it was just a huge success. Very happy it's over with. And then secondly, went to the MCCMC Legislative Committee meeting. I will send you all the action items and what to watch, and just, there's three that you need to, please read and look at. AB 1771 is the Planning and Zoning Regional Housing Needs Assessment, and we have SB 912, the Housing Homeless Programs and Affordable Housing, and the other one would be AB 3037, Community Redevelopment Law of 2018. So I'll send all that information to you.
Thanks.
Other council member reports this evening? I just have one. On Monday, April 16th, and this is for council members' information and planning public work staff, the Transportation Authority of Marin staff is going to come to Larkspur City Hall at 10:00 AM, and we're going to discuss the outreach and surrounding the process of design for the 101 580 direct connector ramp as it's proposed as a result of our work on the 101 580 interchange area. And this will be a process for public outreach surrounding the design and the public process for selecting the design and design alternative and the public decision-making process surrounding that project. So I just wanted to invite any council members if they wanted...
So it's 10:00 AM?
10:00 AM on, and I just want to...
What date was that?
Monday, April 16th.
And it's here.
And it's here. Since we instigated the whole thing, I thought we should get first shot at it. All right. Since there are no other council member reports, we'll move to the public hearings. The first and only public hearing this evening is to introduce the first reading of ordinance number 1026, adding a chapter 8.10, Regulation of Massage Businesses to the Larkspur Municipal Code. May we have a staff report, please?
Certainly. Good evening, Mayor Hillmer and members of the city council. My name is Shannon O'Hair, and I'm the assistant to the city manager. So tonight, staff brings before you for consideration ordinance number 1026, an ordinance amending the municipal code to add a chapter regarding the regulation of massage businesses. Staff is bringing you this ordinance today in order to update Larkspur's municipal code regarding the regulation of massage businesses and bring it into alignment with the best practices across the state. To provide some background, massage businesses and massage therapy have traditionally been regulated by local governments in California. Starting in 2008 with the adoption of the California Legislature of the 2008 Massage Therapy Act and a number of subsequent smaller modifications to state law, a number of new regulations have been enacted intended to bring some consistency to massage regulation across jurisdictions in California. This is largely to solve the problem of undue restriction or prohibition of massage businesses in some municipalities that was seen in the state. Among the many provisions in the legislation, the 2008 Massage Therapy Act created the California Massage Therapy Council, which from here on I will refer to you as the CAMTC for brevity's sake, and it's a certification body providing credentialing for individual massage therapists that would be required to be recognized throughout the state. So currently, Larkspur's only mention of massages in Title V of the municipal code. The code identifies massage businesses, which the code refers to as massage parlors, along with animal kennels, bathhouses, and pond brokers, as businesses requiring approval by the city council. It has been the city's longstanding procedure to implement this policy and requirement by requiring individuals to obtain a massage therapist's business license to write letters to the city council and include information such as the proposed hours and days of operation, the estimated number of clients, place of business, and nature of services provided. As required by law, massage practitioners and therapists that have been issued a state of California massage practitioner certification are not required to submit a background check. Massage therapists without state certification are required to undergo a background check by the Central Marin Police Authority. So this practice requiring council approval was established in 1977, and we haven't updated it since. This was prior to the legislative reforms that have taken place in the past decade, and the provisions we have have largely been rendered unnecessary. The background process that was carried out by the Central Marin Police Authority, which was then the Twin Cities Police Department, preceded the establishment of the CAMTC as a certification body that provided background checks throughout the state. And it's becoming increasingly common for municipalities to require the certification in order to practice massage in a jurisdiction. In addition to education and some training requirements, the CAMTC requires a live scan and a background check in order to receive the certification. So with that background in mind, I want to highlight two primary components of this ordinance. First, the ordinance codifies a number of best practices regarding requirements for massage businesses and establishments, including times of operation, certain requirements for kind of health and hygiene things. It is anticipated that these requirements will not have a significant effect on existing massage establishments, and the regulations are consistent with practices across California. I do want to note, both for the council tonight and for the public who may be watching, that the city has not historically had a significant issue with code enforcement or illegal activity with massage businesses in our jurisdiction. It's a best practice throughout the state, and something that we should have in case we need it. And second, the new ordinance will require all massage therapists to obtain certification. Discussing the ordinance with both the CAMTC and some massage practitioners, we concluded that obtaining the certification is necessary, and it's a good centralized process, but that it can be a long process. So we have included an exemption for massage practitioners who have gone through the city's current practice for three years, because it takes a while to get that certification in some cases. Benefits of this certification include that it's a centralized body where you can have complaints about massage therapists, both customers or businesses, that may not be directly related to law enforcement, so not a misdemeanor or something rising to a felony, but closer to malpractice, like to think about it, to a different regulation. And this is also beneficial, because many massage therapists operate in different jurisdictions simultaneously or over the course of their career, so the paper trail and the centralization there provides that additional benefit. So with that, that concludes my oral staff report. I'm happy to answer questions from the council before we open the public hearing.
Are there questions of Shannon with regard to the staff report? Councilmember Chu?
Yeah, I'm not sure, this is getting a little too nitpicky, but it's, it's actually, by definition, you have a sole proprietorship stating that it is the only person employed in the business. And by definition, a sole proprietorship is something where the business and the individual is the same entity, the same business entity, but a sole proprietorship can still have other employees.
Okay.
So, if you want to use that where you're trying to say that that organization only has, you know, a single, you know, person who's employed by that business, you know, that might be something you want to consider changing.
I'll look into that and probably consult with our city attorney. This is modeled after a number of ordinances that have been adopted, so I'll check that against and see how it goes across, but that's a good point.
Okay. There was also another thing where they talk about needing to disclose the limited partners in a partnership. If a limited partner, by definition, has no material participation in the business, would they still need to be disclosed?
I'm going to ask our city attorney to answer that. My guess is probably, likely?
I think we probably would, because even if they didn't have a material financial interest, they might have some operational input into the way the business is conducted.
No, it's, it's not about financial, it's about participation.
But that's, I think that's, maybe we're misunderstanding each other, but I think that's our point, is that if they're involved in operational aspects of the business, we would want them to be identified.
Yeah, but a limited partner is somebody who has no material participation in the business. That's what makes them a limited partner.
But I think what I'm saying is that whatever the legal definition of their participation is, if they have any, you know, if they're a partner, then they have some financial interest in the business, which means they may have some informal input into operations.
No, that's my whole point, is that a limited partner would not...
They never talk with the other owners?
You may want to check that, but when you're a limited partner, you are not part of the business. You've only provided a financial interest in it.
Yeah, I think, I understand what you're saying. I'm, I'm trying to suggest that the way that business is actually conducted may, not everybody strictly adheres to every legal formality like that, and people who have provided financing for the business may well end up in a conversation with other partners about it, but we can look into that as well.
Okay.
And just to provide some context as to why that's in there and why that's in the ordinance, and again, we have an experience of this in Larkspur, but across the state, some folks would start massage establishments that were not on the up and up and were engaging in illegal activity, and then would, you know, either lose their license or have, I don't know, some kind of criminal activity or get shut down, and then they'd move to another jurisdiction, and they'd just take on a different name and have someone different as the business owner. So really, it's to prevent, you know, establishments that are looking to conduct illegal activity from moving from jurisdiction to jurisdiction.
Councilmember Harof.
Thanks very much for that presentation, and I would tend to agree with the city attorney on how limited partners often behave within the context of a limited partnership. But I guess I just have some kind of more fundamental questions about how many active massage businesses currently are in operation in Larkspur, do you know?
We have 12 business licenses for either sole proprietors or single-person shops, businesses. We have Orange Therapy, and then there's, I forget the other name, but we have like three massage businesses in town that have multiple, that I, under business license.
About 12 licenses total?
Mm-hmm.
And are those folks operating out of their homes, or how do they conduct their businesses typically?
It's a mixture. It's actually a mixture. There's only 12, so the sample size, it's not completely evenly split.
Okay.
But it varies.
And just because there's so few, I was just kind of curious, and you may not know the answer to this, if historically, the staff report referred to two pieces of legislation that went into effect, I think first in 2008 and then 2015. One was, seemed intended to provide more uniformity in statewide regulation of massage businesses and remove impediments that local jurisdictions might impose on those kinds of activities. And then the second piece of legislation was intended to respond to some problems that came up during the implementation of the first law and reinstate some capacity for local control, which I think is partly why we're here tonight, to kind of exercise that flexibility.
Correct.
So I was just kind of curious, with the passage of those two pieces of legislation, did there seem to be any impact in terms of the number of licenses that were issued in the city of Larkspur? Did they go up? Did they go down? Did it really make not much of a difference?
Didn't make much of a difference in the city of Larkspur. Partially, when you look at just the topography of our city and our zoning and opportunity to open establishments, some of our, not all, but some of our major areas like Bonner Shopping Center or the Marin Country Mart, the landlords there have no interest in a legal massage establishments opening up in those places. A lot of the initial 2008 legislation had a number of purposes, but one was, there were some cities who basically said, "You can't operate massage therapy establishments here," and it was pretty restrictive.
Right.
And then I think cities found that there were a lot of challenges, both in terms of just code enforcement and zoning, so the 2015 legislation was the most significant. There were actually a couple of different laws that were passed to restore some local control, because basically, you know, by rights, not the technical term, like not the correct term, but you could just open, there was very little opportunity for local oversight.
Right.
After 2008.
Right. So I guess my point is that that's very helpful, because it seems like it's been fairly stable, notwithstanding some of the changes in law that have occurred over time, and no particular reason to expect that that would change in the future as a result of anything we're doing here tonight.
I think the benefits here is, when you just look at the practice of requiring a letter to council, it essentially has you do the, as a body, do the sign-off on, okay, this person should be able to practice here, and then with the CMPA background check. And again, that was before things were centralized and before there was technology like live scan fingerprinting that could pull from a number of different sources. And also implicitly kind of presuppose that you might be practicing in the same area or only one area for a very long period of time. And the, I think, both the business and the technology has changed enough now to where this just brings us, you know, more into the 21st century.
That's very helpful, thank you.
Other questions of staff? Are there members of the public that would like to ask questions or make comments regarding this agenda item? Yes, sir.
James Holmes, Larkspur. I strongly support this proposal, and I appreciate staff's bringing it forward and being proactive on it. Massage parlors are typically, seem to be often fronts for improper activity and even most darkly trafficking. They may or may not be a problem here at this time, but there have been issues in the past. For example, I myself was in the mid-'70s, was involved in unmasking a questionable massage parlor in downtown Larkspur, and I could tell you that story if you want. But in any event, there have, I can tell you to a certainty, there have been problems. And prior to that, indeed, there were rumored massage parlors in the Drone Canyon. So it is something that, and as other cities, as the problem arises in other more urbanized areas such as San Rafael, it is possible that they may decide to come to areas with less regulation, so it makes sense for us to have regulation to address them. And, I mean, this is comprehensive, and it may seem to be overly comprehensive, but it does seem to deal rationally with the range of possibilities that can arise. And it makes sense to link into the state. I have three technical comments. One is, it might be worthwhile to define practitioner. Certified practitioner is defined, but throughout the ordinance, there are references to practitioner and massage practitioner, so it might be worthwhile to define that. Maybe it can be done just by reference to the state code. Very wisely, the proposed ordinance deals with, and proscribe activities with regard to specified adonomical areas. I think it should also include, or preclude, invitation and solicitation to the touching of specified adonomical areas, because that's where it starts. In, all I know is what I read in the newspaper, but based on IJ reports done in San Rafael, the way it works is, the massage occurs and then, at the end of the massage, the person asks them.
I'm sure we'd be pleased to review any proposed language you may want to prepare and provide to us.
And, and they say, right, they say, "Do you want a happy ending?" So anyway, it's the solicitation, I think that it should address the solicitation, the invitation or solicitation for that kind of touching. And finally, I think it might be worthwhile to require that the massage operator show evidence of their certification on request to either a city inspector or to a, or to a customer on request. With respect to the limited partnership, my observation or experience when looking at limited partnerships agreements back when I was practicing in economic regulation was that there are a wide variety of those partnership agreements, and they give different authority to different limited partners. So unless you are looking at the actual partnership agreement to determine what's material and what isn't, how far they can go, I think it may, which is not proposed to be done here and probably shouldn't be done here, too evasive, but I think it makes sense to require all the limited partners to be disclosed. So it does make sense, I think. And so I think, although this may entail a little bit of extra time and effort, I think it is well worth the effort in terms of quality of life and the avoidance of moral hazard and trafficking. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there other members of the public that would like to make comments or ask questions on this agenda item? Yes, sir, if you, please. Welcome.
Hello. My name is Suhyun Kim, and I'm not sure I understand the scope of this particular piece of legislation, which includes what it looks like, you're trying to limit non-legitimate massage activity on the part of clients and their therapists, but it doesn't seem to include assault. Sometime last spring, I sent a letter to the city, it was a pretty substantial stack, actually, of documents detailing a number of assaults of various kinds at Elements Massage. This is around the same time I sent a package out to, actually, an email to the mayor of San Rafael, because I had been told that he had a particular interest in regulating massage more thoroughly in Marin. What I got from his office was that, I didn't get an email from the mayor, I got an email from an assistant saying that the mayor does not have power to some language, and I was disappointed not to receive any response from the city of Larkspur at all. So I was surprised to find out that this was going on. Eric and I found out about this issue from a mutual friend just a few days ago. So are you guys not interested in sexual assaults occurring in local massage studios?
Maybe we could get some information from staff regarding the information that you sent.
It's been a year since I sent this.
Is the business that you were describing in your correspondence located in Larkspur?
Oh, yeah, it's in Bonner. It was Elements Massage. I was in litigation with Elements for about 18 months, and they had under their employ a massage therapist who was certified, and there was actually a grave problem with the California Massage Therapy Council certification process, because somehow Elements owned vetting, and there was very little, and the massage council's vetting did not see that this guy had had three criminal convictions, including two driving with a suspended license and a DUI that included drugs, driving in a vehicle with no registration and no insurance, and about-
Well, we appreciate your comments. We're considering an ordinance here this evening. We'd be happy to have somebody from our police department or our staff talk to you and get more detail about how we can help you with regarding this specific-
That would be wonderful. I'm a little concerned about the police department, because when I reported my assault, their response was to send an officer, who at that point had been out of the academy for six months, and she, the extent of her investigation was a phone call to the studio. She did not make a site visit. And I had spent all night detailing what had happened, and I brought in a statement, and I spent about an hour in interview at the station, and that interview was recorded, but then I think the department lost that recording. We asked for a copy of it and they couldn't find it. So I would really like to ask that we regulate this issue just a little bit more, because the state agency is failing miserably.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, sir.
Eric Licklau, I'm your partner, and it's related, but I actually have specific comments on this ordinance.
All right, great.
On how this can maybe evolve. So I actually want to start first with a little bit why I think what you already have here is so important. The California Massage Therapy Council regulates massage therapists, if they're certified. It doesn't regulate non-certified therapists, and it doesn't regulate businesses. And so what this ordinance allows you to do is actually regulate the business, and that's something that's not currently happening. And so that's very important, because right now, if a massage practitioner who's certified breaks the rules, they can lose their certification. But if it turns out the business was new about it and didn't do anything or encourage them, there's no entity that has authority to do anything about that. So this, what you have now is great. It's a, but I think what would be great is if it could be expanded to not just address prostitution and sex trafficking, but sexual assault. I do have a couple of specific ideas. For example, paragraph three prohibits touching the customer in the prohibited areas. But it could easily be added to also prohibit the therapist from touching the customer with the therapist's genitals. You know, in her case, this guy tried to rub his, rubbed his crotch on her. That's not prohibited here. And I think that would be a great addition, so that we're not, we're not just prohibiting sex trafficking, but doing something to prohibit that. And that's, of course, already battery, but what this does is allows you to make the businesses accountable, so that they have more of an incentive to make sure that they're doing proper vetting, proper, so in example, the case that we suffered, they did do a, the Massage Therapy Council background check, but had they just, had the business just Googled this guy? He had his own website that showed him with massaging topless women, cameras focused on their genital areas.
If we could stick to your suggestions.
And so, but that's, that wasn't, that kind of thing could get captured by putting some more onus on the business, putting them in jeopardy if their therapists are breaking these rules. And so that's what this does now for prostitution, but so that's, for paragraph three, if we could add physical contact by the therapist.
We heard, we heard your suggestion. The city attorney's listening.
Paragraph eight doesn't allow the business to advertise, but it would be great if it also didn't allow the business to hire therapists who advertise that way. Because, so, and again, Elements Massage, their website didn't advertise this kind of stuff, but his did. But Elements didn't list his name, so if you're going to Elements, you only knew what they were advertising. And then I guess one other area that's not in here that I think would be useful, the Massage Therapy Council currently requires that certified massage therapists, when they advertise, advertise with their full, real name, the same name that they're certified under, and include their certification. But it doesn't require that the businesses who hire them advertise that way. So again, using the one I'm familiar with, Elements specifically advertises only first names. Well, with a first name, you can't go on the web and, for example, with this guy, find who he really is. You're trusting that this business, because they're franchised and they're national, and because this person's certified, that they're not a creep and they've been vetted. And turns out, they're not really that well-vetted, and by not, the reason the Massage Therapy Council requires this is so that people can do this kind of research. So it'd be great if this ordinance were amended to make the business apply by that same rule. So those are three specific examples I have, and then beyond that, I just would request, I don't know what the timing is on this and whether the staff is going back and presenting a new version.
This is introducing of the first reading of the ordinance. We're not closing the public hearing yet.
Right, so what I'm getting is, I'm not, I have no familiarity with like how long these processes normally take, but if it's possible, when the staff goes back to review everything, to think about and do their own analysis on whether there's other provisions that could be done in here, to focus not just on prostitution, but sexual assault, we just think that would be really-
I think if you leave your contact information, they can stay in touch with you.
So those-
Appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Are there other members of the public that would like to make comments or ask questions on this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for discussion. The recommendation is to hear the staff report, open the public hearing, waive the first reading, and introduce ordinance number 1026. Councilmember Chu, would you like to start? Or, I'm sorry, city attorney, Mr. City Attorney?
I was, just going to suggest, I think, obviously, we'd love to hear from the council about this, but in light of Councilmember Chu's questions and the comments we just heard, if you think that reviewing those two definitions and considering the suggestions that were just made are things that you'd like to see, then we can go back and look at those, and you should not introduce the ordinance tonight, and we'll come back after looking at those issues and making those changes.
In that event, would continuing the item be appropriate?
Yeah, but if the council members have additional comments to make before we do that, that would be-
So we will take questions and comments from council members, and then we'll consider the recommendation. Councilmember Chu.
I guess I can start. Yeah, I was just going to suggest the same thing the mayor did, which is to go back and evaluate possible language suggested by the previous speakers. And if we do a general cleanup, just another nitpicky item. We write all our ordinances in title case, and it wasn't the format this time. So there are a number of things where capitalization is appropriate in those specific references.
Other council member comments?
I just look forward to having it come back with the changes.
Councilmember Wei.
Yeah, I concur with that, what attorney, city attorney said about looking at some of that language a little bit more that was brought up in the public hearing. I'm aware of, just by reading your situation and on some of the postings on Nextdoor and things, so I applaud that you were able to come here and voice your opinion in a public setting, because I know what you experienced was probably horrific for you. So I think you gave some pretty good suggestions about how we can further protect the clients in regards to assault, and so I'd like to continue to see that. And also the importance of reaching out to our local law enforcement to assist you in that matter, and letting, also letting our massage operators- that matter and letting, also letting our massage operators know that the law enforcement is here to assist them too. So, can we do that?
Anything to add, council member Haro?
Nothing in particular. I just did note that there was a reference to, I don't know how you describe it, in the staff report, to more detailed ordinances that have been passed by the city of San Rafael and city of Nevada. And I'm just wondering whether those two jurisdictions actually addressed some of these issues and provides an opportunity to maybe take advantage of the work that they've already done and incorporating some language in our own.
We'll certainly go and review them. Again, they are more significant, substantial ordinances in terms of the language included.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not...
As well as a few of the other ordinances that have been passed throughout the state that may have some language we can use that relates to this area.
I'm not suggesting copying their ordinances in their entirety, just taking a look at them and seeing if they've come up with some good language to address some of these issues.
Yeah, and I think I'd add that obviously what we're trying to achieve here is regulations of a business and assault is a criminal activity, I think that was mentioned, but I think identifying that that type of activity too can be a subject of this permanent approval or verification of license as part of that. So I think that's a reasonable approach to this line.
Other council member comments on this item? I just want to express my appreciation to those, that's members of the public that spoke this evening. We take these matters very, very seriously and we want you to, we want to ensure you that we will take your comments and suggestions very, very seriously. So with that, I'll consider a motion to continue this item and bring this back further.
I'd like to move to continue this item.
There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The next item this evening is to appoint the Larkspur Citizen of the Year on our business item calendar, agenda. So we will take nominations for Larkspur Citizen of the Year. I know I have...
We'll let the mayor open this.
All right, I would like to nominate Ms. Cindy Winter as Larkspur Citizen of the Year for her dedication and her commitment to improving our alternative routes of transportation system in the city, especially our bike paths. Cindy's been very diligent working with our staff and letting the council know what she thinks regarding where we might make important improvements and I think her hard work and just her spirit, I think, is exemplary and worthy of note. So with that, I'll nominate Cindy Winter as this year's Larkspur Citizen of the Year.
Great. Good choice.
Any other nominations?
I'll second that one.
If not, I'll close the nominations and I'll entertain a second to my moving Cindy Winter as Larkspur Citizen of the Year.
I will second that. Just to say that I appreciate Cindy's diligence, due diligence in really participating so much in all of our different topics and issues, doing her homework because she comes prepared, she's read the material and she's ready to make a comment and to offer suggestions. And I've told her before that I hope to grow up to be like her someday, that I can still at, I don't even know her age, no offense Cindy, but to be participating at such a great level that she is and also to be emulating her ability to be physically active late in her life, so.
I think it's also important to recognize that Cindy goes to the Transportation Authority of Marin meetings as well and represents our community's interests at those meetings. So she sees herself as an ambassador for our community and I think she presents herself very well and helps us a great deal.
And she loves Larkspur, doesn't she?
She makes us look good.
Yeah, she certainly does.
All right, so there's consensus?
Second?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. The next item on the business item agenda is appointing members to the Measure B Citizens' Oversight Committee. May we have a staff report, please?
Good evening. So on November 7th, Measure B, the Larkspur Street Repair and Essential City Services Measure was passed by the voters. Measure B enacted ordinance 1022, which establishes a three-quarter cent sales tax, which was effective April 1st, 2018. Ordinance 1022 calls for the formation of a citizens oversight committee. On February 21st, council adopted Resolution 1118, a copy of which is at your seat, establishing a nine-member Measure B citizens oversight committee. Recruitment was opened from February 22nd through March 22nd, during which 15 applications were received and staff recommends that council make appointments to the committee.
All right. Other questions of staff? Council member way.
I only counted 14. Am I missing one that maybe came in later?
There is one application that is not included. It was a Measure C committee member.
That was Bill Webb.
Bill Webb, correct. And we did not require committee members for Measure C to submit an application. Most did and Bill Webb just expressed interest. He did not complete an application.
Ah, that's it. I was just going through the applications, so I see him, he's in the last one on the list here. Okay.
Can I just say that I was very impressed with all those that filled out an application and I was also amazed how many people were born and raised that applied in Marin. Very impressive. So I just want to thank everybody for applying for this committee.
I have a question for the city attorney or the acting city manager regarding the process of finding the nine from the field of 15. Is that a process that we establish, an ad hoc group of council members to review and do this, or is it the mayor's prerogative, or what would you advise?
I can answer. It's up to you on how you choose your members. So when you initially formed the committee, there weren't requirements to do interviews or whatnot, but if that is something you would like, we can set up interviews, we can set up a committee. Again, the committee is all to you. You pass the resolution, again, which is in front of you.
So that process would be, and discussion and direction would be part of the item tonight, separate from the adoption of the resolution? All right. All right, should we have that discussion first?
Yeah, I think that if you want to...
It can be brief.
If you're not prepared to just go ahead and make appointments and nobody wants to, if you want to have some additional...
Do you need a microphone?
I know.
Oh, Sky.
If you'd like to have some additional process to consider and narrow the field, then I think the first thing to do would be for somebody to suggest something along the lines that the mayor suggested, which would be the appointment of a subcommittee. You do already have a subcommittee that's worked on issues related to the measure, but you don't necessarily have to make them responsible. They could go through the applications and come up with some recommendations for the council to consider and then come back to you at a future meeting, but that's not the only way to handle it. So I think, but if you're feeling like it would be helpful to have that, that might be the first topic to cover.
Who makes up the subcommittee currently?
Or can I?
Kevin and myself worked on the Measure B campaign.
That's right, I guess that's right. Would the subcommittee feel comfortable reviewing the applications?
Yeah, I'd be fine with that.
We'd be happy to do that or for their... And make recommendations to the council, that would be fine.
Or can I make another suggestion that we can do? Because, I mean, are you going to, are you thinking of meeting with all the applicants?
No.
Okay. So how about if we all write down the nine that we think and...
Wait, 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 wait. I'm establishing the process here. Do you want to be part of the subcommittee?
Well, we can only have two.
Yeah, I'm just saying that we can, we can make this happen tonight just by writing down the nine that we think and then...
I guess the bigger question first is whether we want to limit to nine as suggested in the staff report or go to the opposite extremes, given that the size of this committee is still smaller than a lot of our other citizens committees and just say, you know, we're glad so many people are interested, let's get everyone involved.
That was my hope, actually.
What's that?
That would have been my preference.
To take everybody?
Actually, that would be my preference as well.
I just think 16 is, or 15 is a lot.
That's a very big committee. I don't know, should we ask staff how they, would working with a 15-member committee be a reasonable...
But that's still smaller than our other...
This is to review the auditor's report and evaluate projects and services provided with revenue from the tax and make recommendations to the city council regarding priorities of expenditures of revenue. Now, is this regarded to the auditor's report or a broader scope?
It's a broader scope than just reviewing the auditor's report. And I believe the resolution did establish a nine-member committee, so if you wanted to appoint all of them, you would need to amend the resolution.
No.
Well, we're talking about that.
Yeah. I'm there, there are some members who applied that I'm not particularly interested in having appointed as a blanket number. I'd rather have a little bit more of a filtering process, which would be the subcommittee filtering process a little bit more. That's my opinion on that.
Is the concern that the committee would go adrift from the mission of the...
No, they would not go.
No, I think my concern is more that there were several members who applied that I would not be interested in having him sit on this.
So are you interested in being on the subcommittee?
Sure. But we already had two who...
Well, we can...
Sure, I'd be happy to, but...
We're talking about it.
Everyone's looking at me.
So there should be, there should be, there should be no more than two council members.
That's correct.
Can Catherine and I sit on that committee?
I don't personally have a strong preference.
You guys okay with that? Or do you want, do you want to sit on the committee?
You know, in large part, I think all of us are going to have some...
The council has to approve the recommendations.
Yeah. I guess as long as the council still has the opportunity to make their own preferences based on their evaluations.
This is the council appointment, so...
Yeah, just ultimately the subcommittee's recommendations would have to come back to the full council.
Okay. And I personally think since you guys have already been involved with the measure, that maybe we should stick with you two, actually.
Here's how I kind of view this as a process because I know what people are struggling with, because I do too. One of the things I don't like doing is having a public discussion saying why you don't like somebody.
Yeah.
You know, and you know, everyone is well-intended in their application. So by selecting somebody and making a case for them creates the inference that other people who are not being selected don't have those qualities. See that? So I'm just trying to figure out a way to finesse the process of getting people selected without having so much of a discussion at all, my mistake.
There are three options I would see here. One being keep the subcommittee as it is. Second would be change the subcommittee and the third would be to let me do it, which I'm perfectly comfortable doing. So what's the pleasure of the council?
So I have a question of Sky. Is it a Brown Act violation if we had a subcommittee of two people, two of us, and asked the additional three members of the council to submit their list of names?
I think that, while I think that it should be interpreted as just informational, I would be concerned that somebody might take that as basically the council reaching consensus by a manner other than a public debate. So rather than create the, rather than open it up for somebody to have that impression, it would be better if you didn't, I think.
Okay. Thank you for that.
I'm going to recommend that we keep the subcommittee as it is and they make recommendations and bring it back to the city council. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so we've got that now. And the resolution?
No hesitation.
The resolution in front of you is the one you already adopted, just establishing the committee but not making any appointments.
So concluding that agenda item, yes?
Your mic.
We've concluded that agenda item, the motion to keep the current subcommittee of the measure, reviewing Measure B in place.
Do we have a timeline that that has? Oh, Jamie, is there a timeline on this? I mean, this committee has to, by the ordinance, get up and running at a certain time? I'm just curious.
There is not.
But the sooner the better.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, that concludes that agenda item. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make that motion to adjourn the meeting.
Is there a second?
Yeah, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. This concludes tonight's meeting. 7:50.